Live again. Record it. I'll bring up your PowerPoint and I'll give you the clip.
Say apologies for. And when you're starting.
You ready?
I think so, yes. And are we ready?
Yeah.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. My name is Robert Palmer and with me is Charles Cassiola. Sam's up and still up in Anchorage. The goal here is to try to answer questions through a PowerPoint presentation. And please, you know, if stop me anytime if you have questions and Charles can help answer anything if I don't have an answer for you. So. I was asked to present on five items and three potential items depending on where we go in with timing. And so the first five that I definitely want to get through is the source of your authority, your roles and responsibilities, both with you and with staff. A little discussion on quasi legislative and quasi judicial, so describing the differences between those two. A discussion about ex parte communication and when that applies and when it doesn't apply. And then a little discussion on sources of questions. So how to make questions relevant, how to make findings for specifically conditional use permits and variances. So those are the five topics that I definitely want to cover. And then depending on if your timing, we can cover three more, we can just push that to a different meeting. Maybe we stuck. There we go. So. All good. Thank you. So this slide is a big picture slide. This may be the most important slide that I have. And it describes the the source of your authority and I'll get to that in a second. And then also at the very bottom, this what I call a touchstone concept, fair and reasonable process. So there are a bunch of rules, but at the end of the day, there's some flexibility that you have. And as long as you have a fair and reasonable process, we can get through many things. So the source of your authority is this general idea of a police power. So don't think of law enforcement police, but think of government regulation power. And it comes from various constitutional authorities, both the US Constitution and state constitution. And the overarching phrase that you'll hear is you have the power to regulate the health, safety and welfare of the community. Those three words are kind of the touchstones of your source of authority. And that gets applied through a few different ways. So on the platting and subdivision side, you're regulating the, you're using your police power to regulate how people can divide up their land and how they can, you know, depending what utilities and streets and those sort of things need to be there. On the zoning and land use, you can, you're using your police powers to decide, you and the council on this one, as to what, you know, how many homes can be on a piece of property, how many apartments can be on a piece of property, where commercial and industrial and residential uses can be. And then when you drill down to permit decisions, think of those as, as you well know, your variances and your conditioning permits, but distinguish those from policy recommendations that you're making to the council. So we'll, I'll draw that distinction out a little bit further. And then the, this last item up here is something I just want to highlight is that you have code authority to create rules and procedures for your meetings. To my knowledge, you don't have any of those right now. That may be something you want to explore with staff in the future and we can help with that. But, you know, things like when packet materials are due, when and how long can somebody make a presentation? You know, those sort of rules, you might want to create rules for it, or you might want to just keep working the way you are. So those are kind of the sources of authority that you have. And then you apply those in, I'll just identify three areas. So if you have an unfair hearing and somebody challenges that either to the council or if it goes even further up to a judge, usually the decision is invalidated and it's a do over, so it gets remanded.
Just a quick reminder that their decisions are never going to be appealed to the council anymore.
True, as of two weeks ago. Thank you. Yeah. Or to a hearing officer. So. If the decision is unreasonable, that's a little tricky. Sometimes a hearing officer or judge can invalidate it and send it back. Other times you may be able to sneak through under the substantial compliance standard. But the last one, so the first one was something you control, so the fairness of the proceedings. The second one is something you also control, your decision, if that's reasonable or not. But if the law that you're applying is unreasonable, then the law can be invalidated through the permit process. And it's a little bit trickier. That's more of a council issue, but you get to apply whatever laws the council adopts. So this slide sets up the basic rules that will start to apply.
Can you give an example of like, you know, of an unfair hearing and something like when, maybe just like the first couple?
Yeah. So a couple of examples that I have personally dealt with have been if, if an applicant, let's think of a conditioning permit or variance, doesn't matter. If applicant comes in and gives a two minute, three minute, five minute presentation, fine. And then there's public hearing and public comment happens. And let's say there's a rule that's imposed at that meeting that says, you know, public comments limited to five minutes or three minutes. I don't care what the number is. But the commission lets somebody talk for, let's say 40 minutes. And that person has some sort of special interest and they keep, you know, presenting to you and the, and the body doesn't stop that person. I've had an appeal with that go up as an unfair process because that person got, you know, to monopolize the time with you. And it was significantly more than anybody else was given. So that would be an unfair process. The other way I've seen unfair process happening, happen is with material deadlines. So when you're making a permit decision, you're acting like a judge and a jury at the same time, so in a special capacity. If somebody is allowed to present large amounts of material at the last minute, that can create an unfair process. And so, you know, one of the standards that we can get into is you have to find conformity with the surrounding land uses and. And so sometimes I had a conditioning permit where somebody, the applicant at the last minute at the hearing, walked in with an appraisal showing, a private appraisal, fee appraisal, showing that their proposed use, I can't remember what it was, I think it was a marijuana business, but it doesn't matter, would not have a negative impact on the property values of the surrounding area. And so, you know, it was 50 or 80 pages, it was a long appraisal. And so because that was lobbed at the last minute, the public and the neighbors who were adjacent didn't have a fair opportunity to rebut that because it wasn't in the packet ahead of time and it was so big. But if it was a small one or two page thing, probably not a big deal. So those are just two examples of fairness issues.
Who's determining the fairness and who are they, who is the person appealing to?
Yeah, good question. So the initial fairness is you and primarily the chair. And so, you know, the chair would be able to make the initial determinations of what you think is fair. And the chair's ruling could be overruled by the rest of the body. That, that's the kind of initial threshold. If that process breaks down, and it's not necessarily in your eyes, but in a neighbor's eyes or in the applicant's eyes, then they would appeal to a hearing officer and say, you know, the conditioning use permit process that the commission used was unfair and it led to a decision that was harmful to me.
And that could be the general public. So on your example of speaking for 40 minutes and we allow it, well, clearly if we're going to allow it, we're not going to appeal it.
Right.
So then that would fall on maybe the general public to bring it up.
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah. And so you got it. And so the initial check and balances is on the body. So you have a chair who gets to make those initial decisions. But if any of you feel that something is unfair, you can raise to a point of order and say, you know, I think we need to, you know, cut this person off in a minute or to have them wrap it up quickly because they're grossly exceeding their time, something like that. Any other questions on this slide? Maybe this one will work. All right. So I'm going to draw some distinctions here between two roles that you have in quasi legislative and quasi judicial. So think of legislative roles as making a recommendation to the council. Think of quasi judicial as making a decision. So where you get to make decisions are with permits, conditions permits and with variances. So you get to, you're the final decider and if there's something that somebody wants to challenge, that goes up to now a hearing officer. If. Yeah.
Yes. So Rob and I wrote this piece of legislation, mostly Rob. And the council did approve it unanimously. So appeals from the P and Z, as well as other appeals within the city, will now go either straight to a hearing officer or they will go to the city manager and then to a hearing officer. So basically taking the council out of the process. Rob or. Well, we don't have a hearing officer unless we have an appeal.
It's a third party?
Yeah. Yeah. So the basic idea with the hearing officer concept is assuming there's not a hearing officer that's already working on something, the city has the option via the clerk to hire whoever is most qualified. And the kind of default person or entity that the city's ready to go with would be the state office of administrative hearing. So there's a group of state employees that are administrative law judges, so hearing officers, and that's their job. That's what they do day in and day out. And they have, what I have worked against them and with them on various things. And they have provided, in my eyes, a very fair deal where they're usually the cheapest hearing officers that we can find and they provide fair decisions. And they can usually get up to speed quickly on issues that are, you know, municipalities are dealing with. You know, normally, for example, they would deal with tax appeals with the state and with, you know, sometimes you can see him working on workers' compensation type issues. And so they're familiar with a variety of subject matters and municipal stuff is, they can definitely bring, get up to speak quickly on. Thank you.
We have a question on Zoom. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Gary. Dennis, if you could talk louder or bring your mic closer, I can barely hear you.
Thank you for the reminder, sir.
All good.
So at this time, there's, there's no way, as of two weeks ago, for planning and zoning to recommend a policy to the council. There's not, no way for us to communicate with them directly without going through either a single body being the manager or a third party, which is on the clerk.
A little different. So the hearing officer role is only for an appeal of a quasi judicial.
Oh, judicial side.
Exactly. So appeal of a permit. So in your legislative or quasi legislative role, so you know, when you're making recommendations to code changes or you're making a recommendation to a comprehensive plan amendment, you have, you know, full reign to, you know, send that package up to the council and have the council consider it.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions on the distinction between those two? Because that sets up kind of the next couple of slides I'll get into. Maybe, there we go. So just a quick reminder, when you're in your quasi judicial role, you're looking at permits. And there's kind of two rules that I want to focus on here. One is this concept of due process. So because you're acting as a judge or in a jury, you have a little bit more confined role than you do in the quasi legislative side. And so this concept of due process applies. And so that's this idea that you have to be impartial, you have to be an impartial decision maker. You have to give notice to the public of your meetings, you know, and the clerk and staff do that through the Open Meetings Act tools. But you also have to give reasonable opportunities for participation. And I say participation, sometimes it's comment, sometimes it's not. But the overarching concept is that it's this fairness idea. And so if people can present material at a hearing, you know, does that material need to be capped with a page limit? Or does that amount of material that they present to you need to have a time limit such that it can be fair? So you can get the information you need, but the applicant or neighbors who are super interested in whatever the project is, they have a fair opportunity to know what's being presented. Because they, you know, in the overarching idea here is we don't want people to be blindsided, whether it's you, the applicant or the neighbors. Any questions on that? Maybe see some stewing. And then associated with that concept, we, I'm just going to open the door a little bit to this idea of ex parte. But I'll just start with a concept that you want to make sure you read the packet and I say, limit your extracurricular activities. So because you have to be neutral and fair and you have to make a decision based on what's presented to you, either in the packet or at the hearing, you don't have a lot of liberty to go do a site visit on your own. You don't have a lot of liberty to call an applicant. You don't have a lot of liberty to call, you know, a neighbor who's interested. And I'll go into those a little bit more, but those sort of extracurricular activities can get, can, can present facts that indicate that the hearing is unfair or the process was unfair. Any questions on that before I dive into those?
Well, it's kind of hard not to see the site if you're supposed to make a recommendation on what, whether the site meets your criteria.
Yeah. So, you know, let me see if I can bump here for, up for a second. I'll have the slide up and I'll talk through a few ideas. So if you're driving a normal route to work or to, you know, see family or friends or pick up kids, whatever it is, and you have to drive by a site, no problem. If you're driving a route or walking a route, riding your bike through some area for recreational activity is like generally no problem. But it's when you make a concerted effort to go to a site, to stop there, look around, potentially talk to people, that's when you get into potential ex parte issues. And the reason why it becomes a potential problem is you are supposed to be a neutral decider, a judge and jury, only deciding facts and the law based on the information that's presented to you in the packet and at the hearing. And so if the applicant who has the initial burden to convince you that their project complies with the code, if they haven't done that, then you have options to either say, you know, we're not ready to make a decision tonight. We need to continue this to the next meeting and we need this information from the applicant. Or we need, we can't make a decision tonight because we need more analysis on this topic. And staff, if they can present that material in a supplemental staff report, that would be helpful. That's the tool, the, like the normal tool to use to get that information. There have been cases where commissioners and council members in appeals have made site visits that have been overruled because it's treated, it was the result of an unfair process because the neighbors weren't allowed to be there to, at the same time to see the site when you did or the applicant wasn't allowed to be there, or maybe an applicant's representative was there, but didn't have permission to talk to you. Like those sort of fact patterns arise and that makes site visits really complicated. Maybe we can have some more discussion on this one.
There's another aspect of that as well, which is if, if one commissioner is calling the Department of Transportation to find out information or something, it also means that the commission as a body doesn't have that information. So all the commissioners should always have the same information available to them. So that's another aspect of what you might call, you know, extrajudicial fact finding, right? If a commissioner sort of decides to engage in his or her own investigation into things, then it's not information that the entire body would have. It doesn't really help if you later report it to the body.
But that's a different issue.
Oh, I was just going to say like, yeah, what kind of, if you can come to the meeting and either have a lay down of communications you've had or things you've learned or conversations and.
Well, and often a way to just address things like that would be to ask the planner, you know, if you think that there's an issue, you could ask the planner, can you look into this for us and present information?
Okay.
You know, to the commission when it meets on whether, you know, Department of Transportation's driveway policy, whatever it is that.
Yeah.
Can I just add to that? I am working on a standard of operating procedures on how we do staff reports. It's something I've done in other cities that as staff, before we really start looking into it and writing a report of analysis and impact, we do site visits and we take photos. So I would probably start doing that as an attachment, a site visit photo. So you can really see the neighboring site, you know, to alleviate the fact that, you know, if there's issues of you showing up there, you know. So that's something I'm looking for.
I would say you're pretty comprehensive now, you know. It's the difference between eyeballs and eyeballs.
For sure. And, you know, I fully recognize that many, and we have a slide on this later, that many applicants that come before you, this is the first time they've gone through this process because they're a small mom and pop type operation. And they don't fully know what you need and what's important and what's not important. And so having staff who can help provide a staff report and especially if you have questions or you want more information, you know, try to use staff as the tool. That way the material gets presented in the packet ahead of time. And I'll dive into that a little bit more. The overarching kind of philosophy that I have for this presentation is to talk about things three or four or five times in different ways. And sometimes one of those ways is will resonate with you more so than somebody else. So we're in the quasi judicial role, we're thinking about a conditioning permit or a variance that's in front of you. Remember the touchstone concept, we have to be fair and reasonable. We apply that down because we're in this quasi judicial role. You have more constraints than you do in the quasi legislative piece. So I'll just say, just big picture, ex parte issues. So getting information outside of the hearing process is far more constrained in a quasi legislative role than it is, excuse me, in a quasi judicial role when you're deciding a permit than it is when you're looking at legislation. So quasi judicial has these tighter constraints because you have to be, you know, unbiased, neutral and fair. One of the kind of rules on ex parte information is if you didn't find that information or if you didn't get that information through the hearing process or through the packet, it might be likely is this, you know, potential prohibited ex parte issue. And I have a list of kind of typical ways this ex parte issue comes up. And it could be independent research. It, you know, could be you going through your past hearings that you've done, thinking about your past permits you've decided and pulling staff reports, pulling analysis, pulling things from those packets. That would be independent research. It could be having a conversation with a neighbor, it could be having a conversation with an applicant or some other interested party. Media, including the internet, radio and print can get a little tricky. That can lead to ex parte communication. So if you can, if you think about it, if you were in a jury in a murder trial, sometimes those are very publicized events and a judge may tell you you're prohibited from looking at the news and media if it talks about this trial or the proceeding of this trial. So the same sort of concept would apply to you. It's a little softer, there's a little bit more give because it's administrative. It's not, you know, we're not limiting somebody's liberty. But that same sort of concept applies. And I have a question mark on city staff and I'll get into that in a little bit. So let me go to the next slide. So the prior slide was permits, quasi judicial, this is quasi legislative, so different topic. You have a lot more discretion here. So when you're asked to decide, is this comprehensive plan amendment, is this code amendment something that the community wants? You're allowed to have a bias. You're allowed to have an interest in that of, that's, you know, supporting whatever you think the community needs. That part's okay because we're in the legislative side. The, you know, the due process, the impartial rules don't apply here. And so, you know, you can go do independent research when you're making policy recommendations. So big distinction between the two roles that you have. Any questions on those? Trying to drive a wedge into this a little bit deeper so you can at least have some background as to why, you know, the staff might ask you to, you know, what, why are you explaining it? Why, like when you're deciding a permit, like, tell me more, why, why did you get to that fact? Or why did you get to that conclusion? Whereas in a legislative role, you can make those statements and we don't have to do a lot of inquiry.
So from the quasi judicial side, if you were to be on your walk by this area and a neighbor came out, knew who you were, started talking to you about it, but then you came to maybe Linda's office and explain what happened and then you have a disclosure and then maybe they write it out and now it's fair, everybody has the same information. And you're not compromised essentially. If that didn't happen, would you, would it be appropriate to maybe excuse yourself from the vote or?
Yeah. Yeah. No, good question. So that was right on cue. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So. I've got different colored slides up here, kind of describing some of those fact patterns as you just articulated. So if, in the kind of orange reddish slide, if you identify that, you know, whether you're at a grocery store or you're at, you know, a neighbor, you're just walking by, like somebody comes up to you and you can, like, you may not know and that's, that's fully okay. You may not know that there's an upcoming conditioning permit application. You may not know there's an upcoming variance permit. You, you may know that. But if somebody comes up to you and starts telling you and asking you about, you know, you know, what do you think would this comply with the code? Do you think this, this project could get approved? Do you think, you know, these rules are reasonable as applied to my project? Like if those sort of things start coming up, you might pause and try to figure out how to avoid that type of conversation. Or say, hey, I can't talk to you right now, let me check with staff, see if this is a permit that's in the works. Or, you know, you could ask the person, is this a permit that you've applied for or that you intend to apply for soon? To get that understanding because if it's a permit they're applying for, that's, you know, we're walking into that ex parte issue. If it's the person saying, you know, I'm asking you these questions because I want to, you know, consider some sort of code amendment, whether it originates with the commission or with the council, that's a different story. You can have those conversations if it's a policy code amendment. So if it's a permit issue, you want to try to avoid those conversations. You want to try to stop those conversations as early as possible. And if, you know, enough of a discussion happened or you feel that enough happened and that there's a little bit of subjectivity there, I fully admit that. You know, sometimes it's too late and then you have to go through a process of disclosing it and then presenting it, you know, to the body and figuring out, you know, are you conflicted? Are you disqualified or can you still be neutral and fair? You know, the yellow slide has an example of a grocery store conversation that if you know that a permit is coming in front of you and that individual comes and says, hey, I want to talk to you about this permit. It's, you know, here's an easy prompt to say, I can't discuss the permit application. Please attend and comment at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing whenever it's, it's published. You know, that's a way out if you need it. I take a deep breath here because there's some tricky issues on emails and phone calls. And it depends on the source of the information. So it doesn't matter if, let's stick with an applicant for a second. Doesn't matter if the applicant meets you in the grocery store in person or calls you on the phone or emails you. That can all be the source of ex parte communication. But what happens if it's another commissioner? Reaching out to another commissioner saying, hey, I don't understand this, can you help me understand this? Or do you think this makes sense? Or does, do you think this satisfies our code? That's where things get a little tricky. And then I'll extend it out a little bit further with staff. And that's the last box. It kind of depends on what type of information you're asking staff for. And some communities, Homer in particular, because of some very interested parties there that want to keep Homer Planning Commission following the law to the very nth degree. You know, Homer has had to explore this issue a lot for 15, 20 years. And kind of the, the setup that's resolved that between commissioners, the Open Meetings Act generally says that no more than three of you should have a conversation. I take a pause there because if you're deciding a permit, that's a quasi judicial thing and there's a little bit of a gray area with permits because the. Because the Open Meetings Act has this exception for quasi judicial hearings. I don't want to get into that too hard, other than to say that try not to have a conversation with more than three commissioners. Otherwise, we get into weird issues that we have to flush out if something happens. So if one commissioner has a question, you can ask another commissioner, that's fine. You know, I won't go into details any further on that. But with staff, there's three bullets here. If you're asking for procedural information, so you're asking for facts as to, you know, when did the council adopt an ordinance that regulated this? Or when did, you know, this packet, like, have you published the packet, the staff report for this planning commission hearing? That stuff, procedural information, that's okay. Simple substantive info. So think of, you're looking through a packet and you're like, I don't think the staff report fully analyzed this issue, or I don't think the applicant fully analyzed this issue, or, you know, this neighbor, this interested property owner raises an interesting question about noise, lighting, access, frontage, like those sort of thing. And you, you say, you know, I need to talk to staff. I need to understand, is there a code reference? Is there some governing law that covers this? You know, reach out to staff and that's usually okay because what staff, you know, depending on how relevant it is, if staff thinks it's important, if one commissioner asks it, or especially if staff reaches out to the chair and says, hey, I had an inquiry from a commissioner. I think this probably needs to be sent to the whole commission and the public. Staff can then do a supplemental staff report, one page, two page, whatever it is, just to identify that code section. Like, so a simple substantive thing is usually okay. Detailed information and analysis gets tricky. So if you think that information is really needed and you have enough, you know, leeway before the hearing to ask for that information, it's usually okay to ask staff for it. So, you know, we need, I want to see past variance decisions on, you know, this topic, whatever it is. You know, variances relating to steep drop offs, like how have we decided those? Or, you know, what, what were the conditions that we imposed on past marijuana businesses? I want to understand those so I can then figure out, you know, do I need to change something or add something to the current marijuana conditioning permit? That type of information, it could be highly relevant. And if you think it's really important, please ask staff as early as possible so staff can then, you know, gather it and then figure out a way to either publish a supplemental staff report or figure out a way to highlight it in a staff presentation at the hearing in a way that's neutral and fair. Otherwise, you may have to delay the meeting to the next commission meeting if that request of information is so substantive that it would give the applicant a disadvantage that it came in so late. Does that kind of make sense? So there's a little bit of reasonableness that applies on expertise communication, especially dealing with staff.
Good question. Disclosure for expertise communication. Does that have to happen before the meeting? Or can it happen at the beginning of the meeting before a motion is made to discuss whatever the permit is about?
Yeah, great question. Short answer is it depends. So the earlier the better, right? Because we want to be as fair and transparent as possible. So earlier the better. So if you've had that potential interaction, let staff know and then staff can work with you and potentially the chair and draft up essentially a notice saying this happened and then the information is out there. If it happens at the last minute, then obviously there's no way to do a supplemental staff report. There's no way to do that early discussion. And then as soon as the, you would do it at the hearing. So as soon as the item is called, you know, you could say, you know, preference would be before the, you know, that hearing happens, you reach out to the chair and say, hey, I need to declare a potential expertise discussion. That way, the chair knows it's coming. And then you can then disclose it at the hearing and we can walk through a few of those options here in a second. Yeah.
You can disclose it and then is there, is the chair rule or does the, does the commissioners rule?
Yeah, no, thank you. The initial ruling happens by the chair. And then if the body wants to disagree with that, somebody can make a motion to challenge the chair's ruling and it would have to be approved by four of you, so a majority to overrule the chair. So great job queuing me up for this next slide. So thank you. Another donation going this direction. So if you've had, and I'll call it de minimis, if you've had this small kind of expertise interaction and you have time prior to the hearing, the best goal, best practice is to disclose it upfront so the staff can then figure out how to get notice out. If you can't, because it's last minute stuff, that's fine. You get to orally disclose it at the planning commission hearing. And then the tricky piece is kind of like with conflict of interest. You have to describe whether you can be neutral and fair. So can you still be impartial like a jury is expected to be or a judge is expected to be? And sometimes I have had commissions where the chair will, you know, will take that disclosure and then ask you, do you think you can be neutral and fair and still be unbiased? Some people can say yes. Some people say, you know what, it's too much. I don't think so. And then you would then ask to be recused. Chair would usually agree, but sometimes there's a need, if there's only four of you here, potentially to challenge that decision because the applicant has an expectation that their permit would be decided that night. So there's a little bit of give and take that the chair has on a few of these issues. And then assuming there's no objection from you, the best practice, and this is coming from a few cases out of Homer, the best practice is to ask the, if there's anybody in the public that has an objection, and if there's no objection, then the chair gets to make the decision. If there is an objection, either from a commissioner or from the staff, then again, that, or, excuse me, the public, then the chair also gets to make that decision. And, and then if the body wants to overrule it or challenge it, somebody would have to make a motion. Any questions on kind of that process and the steps?
I don't know. I mean, this is such a squishy thing. Have you seen chairs or bodies like do a good job of saying like, no, you're fine? Or no, this is a place where you really couldn't be. I don't know. It's just like, I'm having trouble thinking of an example of where like someone really was so, I can't even think of an example.
Yeah.
Where they would, they wouldn't be able, they would be so biased that they couldn't make it, be a part of the meeting.
Yeah, I think what, what I thought of that we encounter, not frequently, but often enough, is the whole notion of the 50% 50 foot setback for, for like, you know, a stairwell or, or a deck. And, and I suspect if we looked through the record, we'd see some yeses and some no's. And, and that's, the question is, were we, were we biased at all in that decision making based upon who and when and how and what?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you could certainly get into that logic.
Yeah. Yeah, you can. And this, usually this is one of those circumstances where you know it when you see it. You know it when it's presented. You know, if it's a commissioner that says, you know, I had a 10 second conversation with somebody in the grocery store, I think I can still be neutral and fair. We didn't get any substantive details. You, you kind of know that, okay, you know, commissioners are entitled to be trusted. They're, you know, what's being told to you. The companies five or seven years ago that were pushing out scooters in major metropolitan areas, Lime and others. And the question was, you know, can they start up a business in this community? Because there was a rule that said that they couldn't. And one of the commissioners owned a bike shop, and there was only two bike shops in the community, and wanted to rent scooters. And, you know, that gets into a financial conflicts of interest. But there's also this question, like, you know, that commissioner had had a lot of conversations with the applicant. Could that commissioner be neutral and fair? The answer was no. And even that commissioner admitted it. You know, the commissioner said, I've got a, you know, disclosure both on a conflict and expertise issue. I've had multiple conversations with the applicant. I also run a business and I want to do, I want to compete with the applicant. I don't think I can be neutral and fair. Like, it, it's almost clear when they come up. There may be an individual in Homer that would disagree with me, but that's okay. Yeah. So.
I have a question, I guess, just on the impartiality issue, what he brought up about the, the Kena River overlay district. So if someone is passionate about that or about pedestrian walker, walkable areas. So if, if a commissioner is pretty passionate about something and then every time something comes up, you know they're going to vote.
Yeah.
How does that work? Because we're not like a true jury where we're hearing a case for the first time.
Right.
I mean, we hear the same things over and over again. We kind of build a leaning, I guess.
That's a great question. So that's usually okay unless you truly can't be neutral and fair. So as long as you can be neutral and fair, you know, you can have that background that you walked in with and that experiences, and the experiences that you walked in with. That's usually okay. It's just if you cross that threshold where it doesn't matter what the applicant says or what the neighbor says, that you couldn't listen to them and if all the facts followed in their direction, you would never vote for that, that project or, you know, whatever the permit is that's in front of you. Does that help? Yeah. I've got a slide. So the, the discussion we just had kind of focused on expertise and the process for expertise communications. It's super similar to this idea of a conflict of interest. And we have those heightened standards when we're looking at permits and we're in the quasi judicial realm. We have slightly lower standards when we're in the legislative capacity. But for both of them, we still have this underlying conflict of interest standard. And in the code, section or title two, chapter 24, anytime you have a substantial conflict of interest, you have to declare it and then figure out what to do. So if it's a substantial conflict of interest, you know, I've got two examples that are listed. If you have essentially a $500 interest in something, that's a substantial conflict of interest. So let's say you have a conditional use permit in front of you for a gravel pit and you have a business deal with the applicant where you either are providing supplies, equipment, you're taking gravel out, putting it on a project, whatever it is. If it's $500 or more, the code describes that as a substantial financial conflict of interest that has to be declared. The code also suggests that you have to ask to be excused. So there's a little bit of discretion there for the chair and the body determining, to determine based on those specific facts that night, is the public interest best served if you stay or go? Usually the best interest is if you can't be neutral and fair, you got to go. But there can be a few kind of exceptions to that. And I've got a slide that we can go through. If you're, obviously if you're an interested party, if you're, you know, if your family member, close family members, you know, that lives with you is coming up to testify in front to say that, you know, we oppose this project or instead of I oppose this project, like, that would give rise to a substantial conflict of interest. The trick, one of the trickiest issues is this last one that I put a question mark on. What happens if there's an applicant who's doing something near you? You don't know about it, but you get public notice that, you know, maybe the public notice went out to 500 feet and you get public notice that there's a conditioning permit being applied for near you. Does that mean you have a conflict of interest? This usual answer is no, as long as you can still be neutral and fair. But in that circumstance, that's one of those gray areas. That's one of those close calls that if you got one of those notices that there's a project being proposed nearby that has a planning commission hearing that's upcoming, that would be an example where you should come to the meeting, let the chair know that you've got a potential conflict of interest that you want to declare. And then, you know, tell the chair upfront, do you think you can still be neutral and fair? Or do you think you're going to be biased because of, you know, whatever reasons and that's okay? And then the chair can then, you know, have that process and then, and you can make that disclosure and then you can state whether you can be neutral and fair.
Does that process normally involve, I don't know, six or eight questions from one of our lawyers to a commissioner prior to the chair making their decision?
It can.
Is it standard?
I, I have not had that experience here. I don't know if you have.
We invite lawyers just rarely.
No, I don't think it's standard. I mean, I think it really just depends on the circumstances. I mean, I was just thinking to myself, you know, if there was an application for a variance because someone wants to put a small shed a few feet into the setback, you know, and that's two houses over from you. I don't think most people would see that as sort of, oh, this really is something I'm conflicted over. You know, on the other hand, if it was a conditional use permit for, and one of the many uses that people tend not like in their residential neighborhoods, you know, and it's in the next lot, that's something where there might be a much stronger inquiry. So it really just depends on the facts, you know, how in-depth sort of an inquiry into a commissioner's potential bias would go.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question? Deal. Any other questions? Let me, I'll just briefly summarize this. This is a case out of Homer from 1996 with Mr. Griswold. And the issue in this case is really challenging because the planning commission, this is essentially a rezone for, to allow automotive sales on 13 lots. Planning commission had a process. We're in the legislative side here. Planning commission made a recommendation. It then went to the council and one of the five member council at that time, one of the five members lived on those 13 lots subject to the rezone. So it's kind of this open question, if you're close to that public notice piece. And ultimately voted, didn't matter for this purpose, how that person voted. And Mr. Griswold filed suit alleging that there was a conflict of interest or there was some sort of impartiality that was breached. And the Supreme Court, Alaska Supreme Court identified three scenarios that the lower court then had to reevaluate. So if the conflicted or potentially conflicted council member or planning commissioner, in your case, casted the decisive vote, then the action is invalidated. That's an interesting approach. Similarly, if the conflicted council member didn't cast the decisive vote but failed to disclose that potential conflict of interest, then the action is likely invalid. It's only if the council member did not decide, or commissioner, did not issue the decisive vote, so like a three, two vote, and the member disclosed, then the action is likely valid. And so it sets up this presumption that even if you have a close, a potential conflict of interest issue or expertise issue, you're better off disclosing it, having it publicly known, let the chair rule on it, and then you can go on your merry way of processing the hearing. And I'll, I'll wrap up this slide with this concept that it's okay to have conflicts of interest. It's okay to have an expertise disclosure. What's not okay is holding it a secret and not disclosing it. I talked about most of these things. The last kind of triangle category I want to talk on here for a second is we want to make sure that you stay relevant within the scope of the permit review. So I have an example. Let's say you're, you're asked to decide a conditioning use permit for a multifamily building. You may have a good reason to inquire about trash disposal, trash can locations to deal with bare attractive nuisances. That can be a legitimate public issue. But how they manage trash inside, or maybe I just used the example of coverage, how big the coverage are, how many coverage are in there? You probably don't have a good reason to kind of drill down and require somebody have less coverage or more coverage unless there's some sort of public issue that you're trying to address that's specific to some criteria. So I've identified, this is a condition use permit decision that you get to make. So we're in the quasi judicial role. There's eight standards. You can see them up here. I'm going to, I'm not going to read them because I want to go to the next slide. You get to ask those tough questions of the applicant and potentially of fact questions of interested parties that are providing public comment. And you're doing those, you're asking those tough questions because you're trying to get facts to either establish that the permit complies with the code or it doesn't, or to resolve the potential conflicts, like not all codes are perfect and sometimes an app. Or to resolve a potential context, like not all codes are perfect and sometimes an applicant will push something that has support from one section of code but conflicts with another section of code. And your job, you get to this, resolve that conflict by asking questions and then making decisions. So let me get to this next slide. I don't know why this looks a little different, but is a question relevant? Do you have authority to ask that question because of the permit decision? So this is a list of maybe ten things. I can't see the top two, but I believe the second item was a use restriction. So you can impose time limits on the development. So for example, if there's an asphalt plant conditions permit coming in front of you, you could say, you know, we need to know when you intend to operate both on a daily basis, hours a day, days of the week and number of days total. You could ask questions about an owners association if you want to determine, like, is, do they have a does the applicant have a structure set up to maintain a driveway, for example, or common property? So like a master meter for water or, you know, electricity, but water is usually the most easy discussion. Like, do you have a owners association set up to manage the common areas and the common utilities? That's fine. Let's go down to maybe the fifth or sixth one down minimizing harm. You can ask questions about retaining walls and passers. So like, if there's a project that's in a high erosion area or a flood zone area. You can ask questions to figure out, have you calculated, have you, do you have an engineer that's helped you figure out? You know, is a retaining wall helpful here to, you know, minimize harm to that, that property? Or harmed neighboring properties? Like those types of questions are relevant. If you have trash concerns because of inadversive streams or bear attractants, you, you can drill down on those. Screening is another one. So, you know, one of the classic tools that you have to consider are sound and visual impacts offsite, try to minimize those offsite impacts. So you can ask questions about screening, like fencing and vegetative buffers. You know, you could ask, you know. You know, you've got, this proposal has a bunch of really bright lights. I'm thinking, you know, potentially a, a public project where there's a new lighting system put in at the football field and it's in a nearby residential areas. You can ask questions like, are those lights shielded? Are those lights, you know, angled such that they minimize the light pollution offsite, especially in the evenings? Like, those are questions that you can ask, but the objective is to tie those questions back to the criteria you need to evaluate that permit. Any questions on that? I've got three minutes.
Can you reopen a previously approved?
Okay.
In order to, like, if a lighting issue was an issue. How, how would you address that? Would you just go through staff or would you, could you propose here?
Yeah.
That we reopen this because they're actually not abiding by it at all and it's.
Is it an, like, is the idea an enforcement case that's coming in front of you or?
I guess so, yeah. Like when they're done with construction, they're actually, their light pollution is insane and the neighbors, like, they can't even sleep at night because it's so bright in their house.
Right, yeah. So that would usually be an enforcement case that staff would initiate the process. And so that, that would be a little different than if you were asked in the original application, does this lighting plan make sense? Or, you know, you could ask for a lighting plan if you're concerned about it and, you know, drill down on those questions at the hearing. The last thing that I'll just quickly discuss is tie those questions, tie those legal requirements for, you know, the permit conditions, tie them back to finding. So state in the permit decision, why you've made that decision. So, you know, the idea is that you want to make sure your decision is supported by the facts that were presented to you that night and that your conclusions based on those facts, you know, reference the code that you're working with. And then there will be times and it's accepted and, excuse me, expected for you to disagree with a proposal. And you have tools to amend and add conditions. You have tools to, you know, potentially if you're asked to move the matter, even though you don't agree with it, you can move it and then you can vote in opposition to it. So you have ways to challenge a project that comes before you as long as you can explain why you're making those decisions. I think I'll stop there.
I think, I wish we had a little bit more time because I think that next precedent, you know, it's like things change. So just because we've done something or voted in a certain way ten years ago and five years ago and three years ago this way, doesn't mean that we should vote that same way this year.
Yeah.
And I think especially when you have lessons learned or with the fifty foot setback, maybe lessons learned or with, you know, there'll be a, a single family house in a commercial district. That's the precedent that will come up. And so it's like, how do you when you're going against precedent? But it's in the best interest of the community right now.
Right.
Is there something to, I guess that's your reason?
Yeah. So the, the basic idea is explain why you're going against it. And sometimes it can be that the code changed, sometimes, so the law changed. And sometimes it could be the facts are different. And, you know, the old adage that every property is unique is relevant and that can help you either follow precedent or disagree with precedent. So sometimes you can say that the facts are different.
Can I just have a really quick follow up question on that one? Mostly if conditions are not different and it's a fairly recent decision, similar to the one being presented. And there's no conditions, similar scenarios, how does the commission shift from that?
Yeah. So the, great question. Kind of the presumption, if it's a really recent decision and it's really similar, you would expect that the conditions would be similar or the same. But if a commission makes findings that there's facts that are different, then you have that liberty to, you know, change the conditions.
Thank you.